Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Planning Board Meeting for March 28, 2018. And I want to inform everybody that in compliance with the State of Massachusetts Open Meeting Laws, this meeting is being video and audio taped. First on the agenda, we have a request for a withdrawal without prejudice for a filing at 194 Main Street. If somebody could give me that motion.
I move to allow the site plan to have 194 Main Street submission to be withdrawn without prejudice.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's already 7:06, so next we have a special permit for an estate lot at 67 Myrtle Street. Kevin, do you have the notice of public hearing? Could you please read that?
Notice is hereby given that in accordance with Mass GL Section 40A and the Norfolk zoning bylaws E2H, at a public hearing will be held on Wednesday, March 28, 2018, at 7:03 PM in Room 124 at the Norfolk Town Hall, One Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass, relative to an estate lot application for property located at 67 Myrtle Street in Norfolk, Mass 02056. The applicant is Pelcon Development Trust and the property is located in the R2 zoning district. Reference assessors map 8 block 6, Lot 13, showing a four-and-a-half acre parcel.
Thank you, Kevin. Are the applicant here?
Yes.
How are you, sir?
Good, sir.
Could you, I guess we could, do you want to bring that board, maybe put it on the, what is that?
Oh, it just shows that plan plus the National Heritage Society.
Do you want to just leave that on the table right here for us and then you can, you could work off of?
I have a talk with someone.
You do?
Oh, thank you.
Make sure the little green light's on.
Good evening. My name is Walter Conde, trustee of Pelcon Development, here before you in regards to 67 Myrtle Street. A piece of property on the front lawn of Myrtle Street, which contains 7.3 acres of land. We'll divide the land into three lots. Two of them would be formated lots, lots one and two. The reason I did it before you this evening is to create a request, a special permit under E2H for an estate lot, Lot Number Three. All of the requirements of A through F in the bylaws are satisfied with the area. The lot consists of 4.5 acres, but only three acres required. We have 85 foot of frontage, only 50 feet is required. There is no wetlands on the 7.3 acres of land, nor is it lying in the flood zone. It is mapped on the National Heritage Society as an endangered species. An application was submitted with the plan on the board there, which illustrates the existing structures, the proposed houses, septic systems, driveways, and the limited area to be disturbed. The National Heritage Society concluded that the proposed development, as shown in their plan, would not prohibit the taking of any state listed rare species, which I believe you have a copy of the letter in your packet. Although very preliminary plan, there is sufficient land area to instruct a road and get an additional lot in the back with a retention area to the side here. But again, I'm here before you to develop it as an estate lot. I take that route instead. We believe that route would have less adverse effect on the neighborhood. You would have roughly three and a half acres of land that would be undisturbed and remain as natural state. And that in turn would help affect the natural resource and endangered species.
Is this whole parcel in priority habitat area?
Yes.
And on the plan in the back of the estate lot, you've got a limit of clearance line?
Yes.
Is that the pot that natural heritage once left untouched?
Yes, we had some initial discussions with them.
Right here.
And that is how it was, the fact that that was distributed to them. I believe that.
All right. What we normally do with something like that is we require a conservation restriction on that part of the land. So someone moving in here down the road can't just go to it and clear all the way back. And then some type of designation along that line, just to demarcate that from the land that can't be touched with even a bunch of boulders or something, or a post and rail fence, something along that limit of clearance line, just again for future use, so it's not encroached on. Is that any problem?
No.
All right, very good. Rich, you got a review on this?
I do. The plan that you see before you is one of the comments that I made, that to have a plan, the original plan that we had didn't have that development plan showing the footprint of the houses, driveways, contours, et cetera. So that satisfied one of my requirements. He did show, at least he did display a plan that showed a potential development scenario besides the estate lot. So those two things are.
He did?
Things out. Yeah, he, did you see? Yeah. It's on the, no, it's not on that board, is it? It's a small eight-hand by 11? I think it was forwarded to you or not? You can pass it around?
Were these two lots here already formated?
Oh, okay. All right, sorry.
Were these?
The lot was divided in 1987. We configured it a little.
So where does it stand now with the registry? Do you have Lot One and then Lot Two and Three combined? Is that how?
The registry has this.
Oh, that's quite different.
All right, so you got to formate these two lots here? And then look for an estate lot for that?
This lot, we're trying to make the area of these two lots a little larger.
Right.
So we shifted this line down.
All right.
But this is how they currently exist in the registry deeds.
Yeah. So is he going to be submitting a formate plan, Rich, for these first two lots here?
I believe I actually could use the same plan, yeah, because the plan meets the requirements of the formate as well.
Okay, so he can use this all as one?
As one plan.
Okay, thank you.
The other comment I made is that work within right of way would require likely, I think, a public hearing in relative to the state road bylaw.
Right.
Because of some trees. But that can be done.
So what happens to Lot Two?
Afterwards.
Is this Lot Two going to be kept by itself away?
That's already been sold and the house is already on there.
All right, so that, it doesn't show here, but okay, good. Different from this. So you already did test holes in everything out there?
Yes, we did.
What's the soil there?
There were 20-minute perks roughly.
So is there, is there a street? Here? I don't think there is.
Myrtle Street just continues down.
Myrtle Street continues. The next street, if you head north, would be Miller Street.
And behind this is what, just woodland?
Wetlands.
Wetlands behind it, but they noted on this lot?
No.
Question, Mr.?
Yeah, speaking of wetlands, is there a, John, you wouldn't know this from your conservation. Is there a requirement for a distance between these guys and wetlands? And would it, would it be?
Well, as long as he's 100 feet away from the wetland list. There's no streams back there, are there? Then that would be fine.
Or is the 100-foot buffer zone?
Yeah.
Off the map?
It's off the map, I guess, yeah.
Looks like there's actually something already there.
Is it off the map or is it not shown?
Yeah, that's a good question.
I guess it's not relative. It's, I think it's, the buffer zone is not on this lot at all, correct? All right, so, okay. Are these old historic walls here that you're showing on the plan?
Yeah, I have a picture of them. One, the one that's shown there, there isn't much to it.
The one on Myrtle Street?
Yeah. There's like a huge rock here, maybe two or three foot diameter in the center. And with this section, you kind of make out a wall. But this side here, you get some stones coming up out of the ground. I mean, not here to be whether it's a wall or not.
Yeah, that's for another place.
Yeah, that's for another volume, but it's not much there.
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay. And you're going to leave this back wall here that's going to be the side yard? The side lot line for this Lot Three?
The only wall that'll disturb, the ones.
Just the front one, yeah. And this right here, right?
Is this one part of the driveway?
And some of that, right?
And the rest will be left natural.
All right. So I think that when you update this plan to show the restriction line and how you're going to demarcate that area, if, you could just make notation on the plan here on which walls are going and which walls are staying, okay? That'd be helpful. Do you have any questions, Walter?
No, nothing.
Are you all set with this? It looks like a good setup.
Yeah, I don't have any issues with the proposal.
Yeah.
As presented.
Correct, okay.
Will provide the updates.
Needs the requirement? All right.
Right. Those are the requirements.
The existing houses are going away?
Yes.
What's the top of the foundation going to be on that estate lot house? I'm just trying to figure out how much grading has to be done here, where this is all sloping up.
The lots are fairly, they're not, there is a slight pitch going from south to north. I think with 533 feet, there's 20 feet of pitch, so.
Is this going to be a walkout?
No, no.
So you're going to be bringing down the front grade there?
No, it's basically almost a flat lot.
Going 178, 176?
Yeah, there's a very slight incline.
Yeah, okay, so you can barely, you're going to work with that then?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Can you see the plan? Any questions, Aaron?
The only models that were found were eight feet down.
Okay, so you're going to do minimal grading on that?
Yeah.
That's all my point was. Any other questions, Michelle?
I think on the.
This here?
Traditional development, my only question is, you know, development of this lot, is it an area that the fisheries and wildlife people said should be a, no disturbance anyway? And so.
So if they're forbidding you for work on this back light land here, natural heritage, that is?
We weren't forbidden by it. I mean, we proposed our plan and they approved it. And that's, we said that was the limit of disturbance that we were going to do.
So this one would be a different issue with the cul-de-sac, with the street, obviously.
We'd have to submit a new application to the National Heritage Society.
Okay, did you get any literature from them?
No, I would do, I talked to them over the phone several times and we submitted the application, the bit of plans and photos and everything they requested.
And they gave you anything in writing or anything?
They did.
They did? You have a copy of it? Very good. I'll bring it here, but, okay.
Yeah, they don't mention this in the letter.
Right.
It just says.
Well, in the plan, it shows that the, in the Heritage Society plan, it shows that the limited area of disturbance should be here.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So we're not going to be disturbing this any longer than this one.
It meets all requirements for a state lot, Rich.
What's that?
It meets all requirements for a state lot.
It meets the requirements for a state lot, yes.
If there's no other questions from the board members, I will open up. Is anybody in the audience here for this filing on Myrtle Street? Do you folks have any questions? Have you seen the planning?
This is the first I'm seeing of it, but I do have a lot of questions. First one would be the limit of.
The limit of the clearing is behind the stone wall that runs.
What is your name and address?
I'm John Eric Fleming. I live at 11 Miller Street and I border that estate lot on two sides. I border this on three sides, total lot.
Okay.
So the limit of the clearing, I don't, I'd like to know, you know, who determined what that is because the 100 and, what does it say? The limit on the other side of the stone wall there, that's all woods, all right? And those trees can't just come down on there, all right? First of all, on there. The septic on that Lot Number Three, too, is going to be too close to my well as well, all right? There's a well that was put in on the property on there that's, is not going to be standard.
That'll be a board of health issue when they file? How far, how far is your well from the septic field?
Well, the well is probably at the top where the 20391 is written.
Is it more than 100 feet away? Is it more than 100 feet away?
No, it's less.
Less, okay, so that'll be an issue for this young man with the filing with the Board of Health.
The other thing that really bothers me, and I don't know, is the amount of frontage. 85 feet of frontage on the front there on that road with those stone walls there. We also already have an issue three doors up with the frontage there and Conservation may not believe a tree, that when they try to pull out of that lot, we can't see the cars. So that's, that's going to be another issue on there.
But this does, this plan here complies with zoning. The minimum zoning frontage for an estate lot is 50 feet. So they have 85.
So, and other than that, I believe that they are infringing upon the 200-foot buffer zone that's enacted off of the Mill River, all right? Which comes up out of the woods there. And I believe that also puts it right about where my well was. Because I know that's one of the things that we looked at was the buffer zone. And I've lived there for 20 years along that river, so I have a lot of frontage along there.
Well, that's easy to determine. What we can do, Rich, we can go to the GPS maps or call our agent and see if the, this is at a 200-foot distance from the Mill River, okay?
I mean, if you scale, I mean, I have no problem doing that, but if you scale the back of that to the back of the property, it's all over 203.
Yeah, but that's, that line, the 200-foot line, is set by Conservation as to what the plantings are and the wildlife is there.
Like I said, we can, we can confirm that, we can confirm that with the maps.
Right. And so we need to do that on there because that is, well, then where it falls off after that stone wall there, it is all wetland, it's wet.
Where it falls off to the stone wall going to the back?
Yeah, see where the stone wall is, where the number three is? When you go down the property there, that's a heavily inclined down. That borders my property and all that property down there is wet.
Okay.
So, I mean, and it's, it's been that way. And anytime that I've looked to do anything on my property, I have to have it surveyed and I have to have the people come in and tag it as to where the line starts because that line does move.
Well, that's all, that's all easy enough to determine. When he goes to get his building permit, the agent will look at this footprint and he'll make sure it's not encroaching on any resource area. If he does, then he has to file with Conservation. So that's, that's going to be taken care of, not in this particular hearing, but at the next one.
Okay, and the stone walls?
Yeah.
Where does that fall? Because he's going to be tearing down the stone walls. He says there's not much of a wall, but there's walls all on this property that are there forever. And those have been borders, you know, those are protected.
Well, I don't think there's any restriction from him taking them down, but he had just mentioned, if you're listening, he's taking down only the one in front of Myrtle Street, the one that's in the middle of this Lot Number Two, and the one that goes on either side of the backyard of this footprint for Lot Number Three. The rest he's leaving alone. That's what he just told us. And the plan is, if you were listening, the plan that I told him to resubmit will show the walls that he's taken down and the ones that he's leaving. So we'll all have that in black and white for a record, okay?
And the last thing I have is a question on the perk numbers on these lots. That's all clay in there. And they were in there digging previous to having any permits to dig in there. And they were playing around in there. And that Lot Number Three, there was a lot of stuff going on in there. And I know from my lot and I know from speaking with, with people that have built in that area there, older people, that there's, that, you know, I don't believe those numbers are correct.
You're at the wrong board for that. That'd be a board of health issue. And just so you know, when someone's developing a piece of property, they have the right to go out and do minimal testing just to see if the thing is feasible for building, so they have the right to do that.
Without any permits?
Yes, correct. Unless he was in a resource area, then he would have to just mention to Conservation where he's going and he'll probably get a verbal okay.
It's my understanding in reading the town bylaws that anytime any digging is done, that a permit is required.
It's not correct.
All right.
It's not correct.
I'll provide you with that information.
You can do that, but I'm pretty sure, actually, I'm totally sure it's right. Anybody else here for this filing? Just your name, sir, and your address.
Name is Jerry Nelson, 63 Myrtle Street. Will you own that property in the lower left-hand corner? There are two, three comments I would like to make. Number one, the well distance between our well and the proposed well?
Yeah.
That's less than 100 feet?
Yeah.
If you look in the left-hand corner where that stone wall is indicated.
That's one inch, one inch equals 25 feet. So if it's four inches, he's got 100 feet.
It goes down that property and into the woodland.
That's.
Now, the third thing I'd like to comment on. When I had my septic system designed, in that whole corner, I added better than six feet of earth, clear clean earth. They dug down to get to a reasonable sand that was all filled in. And I have my contour plans with me to prove what I'm saying. The top of my foundation is probably about six feet below that level. I just wanted to make a comment. If I'm filling up in the corner there, why isn't the rest of it being filled as well? There's a very slight drop-off, yes, I agree with that. But I'm level with the street, the next-door neighbor, this guy right here. I'm level with his property, but the property in question drops off at a considerable rate.
So where, could you just show us where it drops off on that plan? You could, could you point to this? Okay.
My driveway is right about, right about here.
Okay.
It swings around the backside of my property.
Okay.
From the street to the face of my foundation, I have had to fill. The rest of it does contour back to the back of my property. Probably in from, the property line to the backside of my house is probably about 60 feet. But the rest of it is filled in almost level.
Okay.
So I just wanted to point that out. Again, water runoff from here into here, the well locations, and the kind of fill that I had to put in to satisfy percolation.
He's not, he's not perking around that area?
No, but nevertheless, he's digging in an area that has a lot of clay.
But he still can do that. There's no objection to him digging for his driveway you're talking, or his septic?
No, I'm talking about septic and well.
I mean, that all has to conform to Title V. So when he goes before the Board of Health, they'll decide, number one, whether that septic works and is approvable. They'll decide whether his septic is too close to the well that's in the back, or your well. The question I don't know is that where, is there a reason why you're, is this going to be a drinking water well or an irrigation well on your lot, estate lot?
Well, there's no town water on Myrtle Street, so that's.
All right, so it's, okay.
Domestic water.
And what I'm not sure of is, maybe Rich knows, his well is going, what's it going, within 100 feet of the other existing well? Is that how it's working?
The, as far as I'm understanding, those wells meet the requirements.
I believe it's 50 feet is the setback requirement between.
All right, so I think what the gentleman. Yeah, I think what the gentleman's saying is that by, is yours a bedrock well?
Yes.
All right, I think what he's saying is by you putting your well in, on your lot.
Yeah, I guess you're right.
Is yours a bedrock well?
It's a, 640 feet.
It's bedrock, all right. So I think what he's saying is that he's afraid, correct me if I'm wrong, sir, but he's afraid that your well may take some of the source away from his by drilling within 50 feet.
I think I said, we, those meet the requirements if we have to move it, you know, 10 or 15. We, you've also got to keep the wells away from the septic.
I understand. But they only have to be 100 feet away from the septic and you've got.
Oh, it depends on the perk rates. It's not just a clay cut.
Well, 100 to 1 for 50 feet. So my guess is if you're in a 20-minute perk rate, you're probably going to be 130 feet away. So that being said, you've got a big five-acre lot here. Is there another place that you could put the well so it really protects the existing well that's there? Because if something comes up and this affects the bedrock and his well now starts to lose its production or limits it, then there's a big issue.
Well, and all I'm saying is that the 50-foot offset from the property line doesn't meet the required offset.
I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, is there any way you could move this well so, to avoid any potential danger?
What is the safe distances, I guess is my question to you.
I guess we could check on that and see. But if more than 50, if this is 50 feet now or 60 feet, certainly 100 feet would be way better.
Yeah, like I, I have no problem putting the well somewhere else.
All right.
I mean, I just.
I'm looking for the connection to your house here. So it looks like it has to be 50 feet back from the road or so. So anywhere in the. Yeah, probably actually to the, to the left of your driveway or something.
Yeah, I mean, anywhere in that area, I have no objection to.
You've got the existing stone wall in the back and some of that's coming down. If you had the well back in there, you'd get easy access to your house. And that would get, that would get this well away from that gentleman's well another 100, 150 feet to minimize the thing being. You coming up?
I have no objection.
No problem? Is that worth it, sir? If he moves his well location back about 150 feet?
Behind his house.
Behind his house?
The only problem we've run into recently is the water table has fluctuated as it does. And it's generating a lot of silt. I'm just afraid if it's so close, they're going to be working against one another. So whatever they can do to move that.
That's what we're trying to work on now. So why don't you see if you can, rather than put you to a commitment right now, why don't you see if you can move this well to a proximity that probably would be safer for the existing well there? And if still have it work for you, okay?
I have no objection to that.
That'd be great. So I'll give you time to figure out where that may work best. If you could do that, when you redo the plan, you can put that on the plan where that's going. And then this gentleman here can take a look at that. And, because I know we have a lot of wells in town on acre lots and these wells are, these bedrock wells are 100, 150 feet apart. And we haven't had any complaints with the output being changed. So hopefully that'll be a lot better than 50 feet, okay? Anybody else, questions in the audience?
What other comment? On that house number three in the corner, the upper right-hand corner of my property, that swings in quite close to the property line. I think it's around 12 feet away. Can we put a little bit more of an angle in that and maybe give me a buffer there? A vision buffer along that property line?
In the back right-hand corner of your lot?
Talking about here?
Up where the well is, yeah. Yeah, where your driveway swings in here at this corner. That's only about 12 feet away.
Well, the thing is, you've got to be able to curve in to get in.
Yeah.
So that the.
Well, this is kind of at an angle to, we could kick that over?
Well, the other thing is that this fence that you can see is encroaching.
If I could have something that would give me a visibility.
There's already a fence there, isn't there?
It's four feet high, six feet high.
I think anything over, what is it, anything over six feet in your special, any feet in your special permit?
Six feet. Why don't you, you've got 85 feet to deal with on your driveway. And I understand that, and you want a.
Side entrance.
A side entrance. Although this shows a front entrance. Can you work the swing to bring it as far away from that corner as you can?
Again, I, we can do that. I mean, if you had like a six feet, 10 feet, 12 feet, it would, it'll be very helpful.
If you just flipped, if you flipped the house in the driveway.
Yeah, flip the house in the driveway and you got the problem solved.
Then you've got the septic system issue over there.
Why? Leave the septic system where it is.
Then you'd be driving over it.
Well, that's done in many places in town commercially.
Commercially, not residentially.
How close is your house, sir, from that back corner? How close is your house?
My house?
No, this van's here.
The one corner of my house is 38 feet off my property line.
The corner property line? The corner property line?
Let's look at this drawing.
That shows you, that's his house right there.
The back corner of my house is 38 feet.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So it's kitty cornered in there.
Okay, so it looks like if you put the driveway. Okay, so it looks like if you put the driveway over to the right-hand side of the lot. You could swing it around so you're giving him clearance where the back corner of his house is.
Yeah, again, like I said, I have no objection, I just, just redraw it and see if it makes everyone happy. I mean, I, I, you know, unless someone gives me a distance, it's hard to say.
Well, at least now you know what you're dealing with with this.
Looks like you can shift ten feet, everything, at least, because this is fifty. You could move everything ten feet.
You actually can use, move the box of the house over a little bit, move the driveway over, and then give him extra clearance on the corner there. And you're, you're not, the grading is not gonna be changed much, correct?
No.
Is there a woodland line on this lot that can be saved to protect the, uh?
There, there is, there already.
Are you gonna be able to save that, where, well, you'd be able to save it more if you moved the driveway over to the side.
Lot one, most of it's an open field, uh, I don't know if there was.
I'm just talking about lot three.
Yeah, I'm just trying to tell you. Lot three, most of this area up to the stone wall is, uh, was an open field as well, and there is a buffer zone of trees there that which, you know, we wanna keep it as much as possible as well.
All right, so if you, if you move that driveway over, then there's a much better chance you can keep that whole line of trees.
I think the thing was that the engineer drew it just to, to get access into the garage, so to make that, that curve.
Yeah, that's why we're here. So why don't you, uh, do what Michelle said, move the, the house box over so it's still in compliance with your septic and move the driveway over and make the pitch so it's staying farther away from the, uh, the corner of that gentleman's back house, okay? And then let us take a look at the plan, uh, when it's all redone. Is that all your questions, sir?
I think that'll do it for now, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Uh, anybody else for this filing? No, board members?
All set.
All right, so why don't we, uh, continue the public hearing on this until our next meeting, which is what, April twenty-fifth? It's. Twenty-fifth, is yours up on that? Can you make a motion to continue this to seven o'clock?
Yep, we're moved to continue the public hearing for sixty-seven Myrtle Street Estate Lot Special Permit to April, what did you say?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth at seven P.M.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so you're all set with what you gotta do for the plan?
Yes, thank you.
Very good, thank you. All right, thank you, Pete. Continued public hearing, February 8th. Yeah, okay, very good, thank you, I'll give it back to Michelle, uh, to Betsy. You got a paper copy, Steve?
Yep.
Been a while.
Yes.
We have to refresh our memory.
So you have a new yield plan and a new open space plan?
Uh, I wouldn't say new, I would.
Adjusted.
Slightly.
Do you have both of them up on the screen? Betsy, when you.
Yes.
When you get started, can you put up the, the current budget plan? I think Steve can go point out the changes since we saw him last.
The one Steve or is it the other one?
Uh, well, this might be a good starting point for the, uh, the yield, conventional yield plan.
Before you get started, there's a couple people in the back from Fern Ridge, I don't know if you wanna just let them know it's gonna be continued?
Oh, Mr. Petrosi, uh, called us this afternoon, asked for continuance until our next meeting. Sorry, he just, we got the email about an hour ago. So he won't be coming back till next time.
So we should speak then, or do we wanna speak about that tonight?
Yeah, we, we really should have the applicant here. I'm sorry that you're inconvenienced, but we had no choice with the last minute.
All right.
Okay. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so for, for the record, Steve O'Connell from Andrew Survey and Engineering, on behalf of the applicant Bella Rosa Stables, LLC. So maybe just a quick summary, uh, history of, of kinda what brings us up to today. We've presented as part of, we currently have an open space preservation development special permit in front of the board. At, uh, the board's request, we have had lengthy correspondence and favorable results with.
Rich, can you?
Mass Wildlife Endangered Natural, Natural Heritage Endangered Species Program, because the board was concerned, was questioning the yield plan on its ability to be a legitimate yield. So this is the yield plan. If you recall, there have been no revisions to this yield plan since the last meeting, but, uh, at the last meeting, we presented to you a modification of the cul-de-sac and this configuration. We actually have all of the lots, there was, there was some question about whether, whether the cul-de-sac, which we had initially on an easement versus in the right-of-way. So, uh, Beta's review of, of this yield plan was favorable, so I, I don't think that that's necessarily in question anymore, but the natural heritage issue was an outstanding item. And you should have a copy of an email from Jesse Lettich from Natural Heritage. He's the chief of regulatory review. And he details in his email that, in fact, the, the open space design is preferable, but the conventional plan would result in a take and that a suitable conservation and management plan would allow it to proceed if we could meet the criteria for a conservation management plan, which he indicates methods in which that can be done, as, as I had kinda previously indicated. So some of the methods to comply with a conservation management plan are providing sufficient net benefit mitigation area of similar habitat, financial, uh, you know, contributions to the program, and so on and so forth. So he, he indicates that in this letter, in this correspondence, so I hope that you find that satisfactory because, um, again, he can, he concludes by saying that although the conventional plan is permissible with his department, their preference is the open space plan as we've provided it to them. And it might be a good time to show the latest revision to the open space plan, which, like I said, is not, uh, no significant changes. It should look, uh, very similar to the previous plans you've seen. The minor adjustments we made to satisfy natural heritage was they like to have a protected area that's two times the impact area. So we calculated the impact area, which is the area on the property that falls within the mapped habitat, priority habitat area. So we calculated that area to be five point seven five acres, and that's shown in red. So you've got the text in red, and then this line is the edge of the mapped habitat. And again, that goes all the way to, the red and the green line are co-terminus in this location. So this area is five point seven five acres. That means that we need to provide two times that area for protected, protected space. So with the open space component of the project, we're able to meet that requirement. And in addition to that, we're gonna provide restoration in this area. It's about, it's point five seven acres, it's currently deforested from activities that had taken place on the property previously. It falls within the mapped habitat, but when they got a close look at it, they weren't gonna give us credit for it. We, uh, proposed to restore that area and they were, they were very happy about that. So the protected area, eleven point six five acres in green, which you can see the green line on the map, goes all the way to the property boundary, it comes around. Uh, it, it didn't seem like valuable space to me, which is why we didn't include it at the outset, but the area behind these lots, which now is part of the open space, they considered valuable. And the reason it's valuable is because if you look at the abutting properties, there's tree lines here. So it's a much bigger corridor, it's a much bigger corridor of protection, you know, than maybe that meets the eye. So all of these lots conform to your open space requirement. We've increased the open space to include this area behind these lots. And what I like about that as an added bonus is that we'll have passive recreation trails that will come out to the street here, out to the sidewalk, out to the sidewalk here, and then off the end of the cul-de-sac here, so there's multiple entry points to potential recreation trails in the open space.
Look at that bottom trail end, Steve, I can't follow it, it looks like it dies at the lot line.
Which, I'm sorry, this one?
I'm following the path here, going down.
From the end of the cul-de-sac?
Yeah, around down, and it stops up by the riparian area?
It stops because there's an existing trail there, so we just tie into an existing trail.
This existing trail goes and meanders along the lot line like, or?
Yep, well, the lot line's down here, uh, so this is the edge of the mapped habitat, so it goes through here, then there's existing trail that goes down towards, you know, kind of the, uh, the riparian area. But then we're proposing additional trail here, runs along in the open space, and then another point of entry to the sidewalk, come back out to the street down here.
So you got a point of entry down there and also.
We've got four, four points of entry.
Four points?
Here, uh, the cul-de-sac, uh, one in this open space, and then one out in this sliver of open space that, uh, Natural Heritage wanted protected.
Okay, looks good. Can you describe what restoration means in that pink area there?
It's plantings typically, so it'll be a variety of, uh, tree and shrub plantings and a seed mixture. And then that area will have to be protected with just a barrier temporarily until that area, you know, kinda restores, uh, maybe over a growing season or two.
What is the, what were the, the grade, we talked about the grades on the road that you, I think you last time changed them or going to?
It was the, um, the ADA issue on your slope for your sidewalks?
I think we were talking about eight percent grades last time.
That's right, so the board's concern from the outset has been, you know, how much volume of material's coming out here. And at the outset, we had five percent grades because of our issue with Mass Access Board. So what we did as a revision, which we had presented to you previously, was make the road eight percent. And I think we talked about, there may be some very creative ways to comply with Mass Access Board to accomplish that, but it was a huge reduction in earth removal, so if we, we went from over a hundred thousand, um, you know, down to thirty thousand. And, you know, that was a very favorable and beneficial exercise. I still think that we will be fine at the eight percent, it, it meets your subdivision regulations. We have a pending hearing in front of Access Board for another project in another community. And the outcome of that, I think, will hopefully dovetail nicely into the definitive phase of this where we can let you know that outcome.
We're gonna find that out at this stage, we'll have beta review of that, because you don't wanna go on your definitive when we approve something with different pitches, so.
Well, at this point, Mr. Chairman, I don't think you'd be approving the details of this plan, the, the grades. I mean, that stuff could all be scrutinized on, on a very technical level from engineering. I think at this point, we're just looking for your blessing on whether this, whether we should pursue this as an open space versus conventional.
The one, the one number I was, you're right, but the one number I was looking for is how much material is gonna be coming out. That's what we'd like to.
Yep.
With anything else going on, we'd like to know, so I think if we.
It's on the plan, and, and Beta reviewed that.
But if the grade doesn't, if the grade changes, then the material changes, that was my point.
Right, and, and if, if we have to go to five percent, if, if Mass Access Board says that eight percent, we're not complying, then just like we did in Rentham, there are alternatives to sidewalk, to traditional sidewalks. If we bring the sidewalk up to a certain point where the grade exceeds five percent, we can terminate the sidewalk and then have a walking lane in the road. So technically, it's not a sidewalk, and Mass Access Board has acknowledged all those things. It's currently their interpretation about their own regulations that's troublesome.
I think this board's gonna decide what we want the pitch to be and where the sidewalk will be and all that, so we'd like to get that done as soon as we can.
Well, it's, it's, it's something, in my opinion, that, you know, it's, it's integral to the design of the definitive. I feel like we've kind of exhausted a lot of those, those efforts to date. We've, uh, we've done multiple profiles in grading, um, that, that show what the grading is gonna be at various slopes of the road. We've reduced volumes of cut to the, hopefully to the satisfaction of the board, but.
What's, what's the difference, sorry, Kayal, what's the difference in open space versus conventional plans in regards to the grading of the site? They, they seem like separate issues to me.
They're separate, I mean, they're indirectly related, because in a conventional design, we would have to have, if you go back to our conventional design for a second, you'll see that the road layout is, is not drastically different. So, you know, we kinda come up from the same point and we exit at the same point, but we're making our way up this hill. So you'll have, you'll have significant amount of earthwork just because you're disturbing more land, you have longer roads. Uh, but you're gonna have, to climb this hill, you're gonna have a combination of cuts and fills, um, to get all the way up here. And, you know, this is near, this is, you know, just near the high part of the lot, so you're gonna have, you know, significant cuts to get in there and significant cuts along that road until we tie in. And it's, it was not a requirement to determine the cuts and fills for the conventional, because that's really not what we wanna do. We want the open space, and I think that's a win-win, the open space.
Basically, by the next time we meet, we'll know, because I definitely don't want, I don't think anybody here wants a sidewalk in the roadway. So we definitely want a conventional sidewalk, so.
So do we.
If that works, then fine, if not, then, and, and we go back and have to change the grade, then maybe we can look other ways to bring it down, so that was my point. So that's a big deal.
Yeah, and, and I think those are common exercises, you know, during a definitive subdivision phase, when Beta's.
We're gonna do that right now, 'cause we have to meet again one more time anyway, because we just got the plans. I haven't really seen them for the first time, as our board is too, so I think that we can probably get that all determined by the next time we meet with this, but the plan looks good.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know that you might be seeing that exact plan for the first time, but that, it's essentially the same plan.
Just here, you do a good job for your client, but to be quite honest with you, you've been away for four months. This was, I just got the hot copy today, Beta review, does have to do a final review, so you're gonna be coming back for one more meeting. So that'll give you the chance to, uh, get all of this agreed upon, so when you move forward to definitive, all of these things are already determined. We know where the sidewalk's going, we know the fill, we know the pitch, we know everything.
Would it be appropriate, Mr. Chairman, respectfully, to ask, um, Mr. McCarthy to start to prepare some, some documents that can be reviewed at the next meeting as well?
I think that's fair to ask, you've always been very fair, so I think we can be fair with you.
So if it's a.
A lot of this is gonna be generic, the open space plan.
Yeah, talking about the special permit, you mean?
And, and where we have this, over the beta now, we're meeting in a month. I have no doubt that they can get this wrapped up, Rich, in a couple of weeks, well before the meeting.
Right.
So if there's anything that's hanging over, we can notify you two weeks before the meeting and give you ti, time to work that out, okay?
Sure.
So they make a coordinate with that, but I really, and I think with the whole process on that part of town, we really wanna know how much dirt's coming out of here, really do, okay?
Yep, that number is on the plan, so Beta will have that for the review. Their latest review letter was December fifth, and the only two outstanding items were the natural heritage, uh, issue and it was the pending Access Board, um, issue, but they was.
Can you also follow up on that, Rich, to make, make sure this pitch complies with, with ADA? I was hoping that if it's in our, in our zoning, then it should be complying with ADA, I would think. Maybe not, maybe not, but.
ADA is a state law.
Well, ADA is federal.
Federal.
Access Board. Access Board is Massachusetts. Where's your, I'm just, where's your, are you close to hearing for that by any chance? Where are you with the Rentham, I guess?
Yeah, I mean, we probably won't, we're waiting for, for them, there's been some back and forth. We probably will not have a hearing because it's not moving very quickly. We'll not have a hearing before our next meeting here.
Can't we find out through literature whether this grade works for a sidewalk?
Phil went through that exercise, sorry to interrupt, I'm just.
Yeah, I can, I can, I can circle back with Phil and he can offer an opinion to them.
Why can't Beta make a recommendation based on map?
Well, we wanna make sure that, yeah, that Beta finds out for us definitively, so there's. So there's not, last time, I think the last time, which was months ago, I think Steve and our rep from beta were both thinking that, they thought it was gonna work, but nobody was sure. I think that was the conversation at the time. Nobody was definitively saying we could have a sidewalk with that pitch. So that's where we left it off last time.
I think the letter of the law, MAB's gonna say 5%.
It's-
If it's gonna be black and white, it's gonna be 5%.
It's, it's really, it's an interpretation, and I think, you know, interpreted one way under MAB for decades. And there's a new administration apparently in there, and the interpretation is different. And it's got an impact on 350 cities and towns in the Commonwealth, if you ask me.
It's subject to the current board, and if the current board's leaning that way, and the current board's leaning that way.
So.
Not in black and white.
I know that we don't want a sidewalk going in the street.
Right.
I mean, that's-
So the question is whether or not you'd be wanting to go for that, for variance?
From Mass Access Board?
Yes.
And that's what we, and we're testing the waters on that with our other project.
You're doing it as a variance.
We are, but we have a variance hearing.
So you're assuming that the 5% is their requirement, and you're going for variance for it?
Because that's, we've had dialogue with them, and that's the interpretation they've given us.
Again, that's why we're trying to get this thing done right now, not later.
Yeah, I don't think the Mass Access Board is gonna be something that we're gonna resolve in this special permit.
Where do you, where's the leeway to get you to 8%?
Well, it's not so much the leeway to 8%, it's just that sidewalks along subdivision roads would be exempt, because that's the way it's stated in the federal ADA. But in MAB, it's just not as-
It's pretty clear.
What's that?
5%.
See, Aaron, the difference is when they changed the grading, with the, the million yards of gravel coming out on the other side of Lawrence Street, probably a similar time, we wanted to minimize this right here. And by changing the road grade in that section, we're saving around 70,000 cubic yards of material coming out.
Yeah, we want to do that, too. We just don't want to get-
MAB doesn't care about that.
No, they don't. We just want to get a situation where, where we get to a point of approval with 8%, and then we're in violation of Access Board.
And then you're gonna come back to us anyway, because it's gonna be a major modification, so.
Or, you know, or we-
And then that's, I think, that's what I think our chairman's advice is, let's, let's grapple with if it has to be 5%. Show us what 5% is gonna look like.
Which I did. The first plan we submitted was 5%. The application-
100,000 yards.
Was that?
Yeah.
Well, this is conventional, this is none. But the other one is, the, the current-
The open space.
Open space plan is 8%, which meets your subdivision-
This one, but the previous one was 5%.
You're saying there's a version between this and-
Yeah.
The original submittal for the application was 5%.
I think we can work through that. I personally think this is a real nice setup.
Yeah, of course it is.
I think it utilizes the land well, I like the open space, so I-
So let me ask you this, if it came to a walk path in the road versus that much more fill, would you be willing to grant a waiver? Because this might be a future for, you know, under the current-
It's a slippery slope with this issue with, with MAB, because it says it's gonna impact every town subdivision regulations.
No pun intended.
Because they over, are by law.
What does a walkway in the road look like? I've never seen one.
Well, we actually had one on another project, and we widened the pavement. So instead of having a four or five foot sidewalk-
Oh, what the fuck, yeah.
We widened the pavement to accommodate the sidewalk width, and we have a reflected painted stripe.
Is there a berm or something to stop the cars from going into the walkway?
There is not.
That's the problem, right? That's the problem.
But you are on a cul-de-sac.
Where is the, where is the-
You know what I mean? It's not like you're on a through-
Have a sidewalk.
Where is the eighth pitch on this road? Is it right here?
Yep, exactly where your pitch is.
It's just gonna end in the middle, why even have it at that point?
Wave the sidewalk.
Well, the street sidewalk is sort of waving the sidewalk.
The reality is, is, I mean, I live in a cul-de-sac neighborhood about this size. No one walks on the sidewalk. They walk in the street, they ride their bikes in the street. The women push their strollers with the babies in the street.
Well, especially because nobody is, especially this time of year, nobody shovels their sidewalks.
So you'd be making the street just five feet wider, right?
Right, directly. That's, I mean, I think there are alternatives.
That might be the lesser of the two evils, quite honestly, especially because it's on a cul-de-sac.
And those alternatives, in my opinion, don't, if we went from eight to five, or five to eight, or somewhere in between, it doesn't change this layout. It just changes the grading-
Right.
-that goes off the road onto the lot. So it doesn't, it won't require us to impinge on the open space or have to go back to natural heritage. It's all confined in this development area.
It's all cut.
It's just cut. More trucks, more cut. And we don't want more cut.
No.
The only thing is that-
Which honestly is disturbance on all of that area, quite honestly. Even though you're not in it, you're still disturbing it and having it.
Although, I think, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, the board pushed them to make that connection to the other subdivision. So it's not really cul-de-sac. You have a, a little section's a cul-de-sac, but it's a through street.
Not with, he only has the pinch up the top, right?
No, no, the 8% is right through this stretch here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was up at the cul-de-sac.
Yep.
Apologize.
And that, and that could be an area where, you know, maybe, maybe just a section of that road is wider, or this road is wider. But this one, this one could have a sidewalk and conform.
I see.
This road's like 2%. It's up and down.
That's how I think it would be, yeah.
Right. But I, I think it's a low-volume road, because Cranberries, a cul-de-sac, and Brett's Farm and Eagle are, you know, kind of low-volume cul-de-sac roads.
There's no reason to go up there unless you-
What about, what about a, this modified sidewalk thing along with some of these new traffic calming things we've been trying, the speed shelves or something like that? Just again, as a way to mitigate traffic so that it lessens any other risk of pedestrians and vehicles.
I think when beta reviews it, we'll ask them to look at this. It sounds like it's not gonna be 8% without the sidewalk in the road. So maybe we can ask them to come up with some ideas for traffic mitigation, just to make sure people aren't flying down that road.
Yeah, because honestly, I agree, it's not a lot of traffic, but where it's probably gonna be people traveling the fastest would be right along there, because it's the most, it's the most open part of it.
Right, it's, it's right. They go hand in hand. When you have this deeper slope and you can't have the sidewalk, that's where people are inclined to drive the fastest. It's 8%.
You certainly ask beta, because I mean, I think, in, in keeping with the whole complete streets and traffic comment, I'm sure they've been developing some ways to deal with this if this is, you know, a reoccurring-
We'll have it figured out by next time.
Issue.
So we'll have directions of this, the grade and what you show here, the width of the road, whatever, is gonna be what it is moving forward, so.
If, during the definitive stage, if we decided that, you know, widening the road with no sidewalk in this stretch is a solution, then we would just widen the pavement and get rid of the sidewalk. So it's a, it's a balance. But again, none of those things would impact the layout of the lots and the road. It's just the slope of the road and then the grading, the cuts and fills.
Just like having a wide shoulder.
So, yeah.
So if that, I mean, I, we'd be, I know, if, if all the issues were resolved tonight, you'd be asking Rich to prepare a decision. So I think that that's very efficient use of our time if, if Rich starts to put together a-
What's that?
We haven't had an engineer.
A boilerplate.
No, I mean-
We'll wait for beta's review.
I think you're falling in the same spot. I mean, beta's gonna do the review. If I work on the decision in the interim, I mean, you're, you're kind of landing in the same place.
The question is open space versus conventional, right?
Yeah, which-
Even if, even if he comes back and says he's gotta make it 5%, he's still gonna make it open space.
I think there's not even a comparison. This is by far the best plan for everybody concerned, but not even close.
So what's gonna change in the next month?
We're gonna have the peer review review it.
In its entirety?
Yes. We do trust, but we do verify. And Steve probably realizes they're dropping off plans the day before the meeting. We kind of left the letter on the agenda because they were supposed to be here a week before the date of the meeting to be on the agenda, but we wanted to hear what he had to say and see the new plans, but we still want it reviewed, obviously, so.
Yeah, I mean, there was, the letter from natural heritage was the sticking point. And then, actually, one of the items, which I didn't fail to point out so far, was we had a landscape architect review.
You did say that in your email.
Yep, so those are stamped by a landscape architect.
What was he reviewing for?
Conformance with the bylaw, layout of the site, limit, you know, limitations on, on the overd, you know, overextension of disturbance on the property. They, actually, if you look on this plan, Michelle, they, they wanted to see a little bit more of a curvilinear walking trail that actually was gonna maybe comply with the, with the existing grades more. So we kind of made some changes to that walking trail. And then they, they knew that the biggest influence was endangered species, so they would have, you know, followed in suit with the mapped habitat. But, I mean, I, like I said from the beginning, with, with the constraints on this property, you've got buffer zone, riverfront, mapped endangered species, forested areas, deforested areas. We're, we're putting the bulk of the development in the already disturbed area of the property while staying out of wetland buffer zones. So there's a win-win-win-win?
That's why, that's why you get the big bucks. It's nice because this, this actually, this open space is gonna have a beautiful vista as people walk through that. So it's a really nice feature.
It connects to existing open space in Rentham, and, yeah.
All right, so I think that, does anybody here for this filing? Would you have any questions or comments or anything? You're all set? Any other bullet questions? You guys all set? Rich?
I think we said, I think someone said last time that just got a feel for what 8% is like, driveway out here.
Yep.
This building doesn't comply with-
Yeah, right.
We get the sidewalk anyway.
Yeah.
Well, that was 20 years ago, so this is a newer interpretation.
New interpretation.
So it's about 1,000 feet of that 8% pitch, roughly?
One, two, three, four, five, six, 600 to 700.
Okay.
Because this is flat in here, and then it climbs. So 100, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 6 and a, 650, maybe-
Okay, that's not too bad.
Levels off up top here.
Okay.
Okay. Well, very productive meeting, thank you.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll put you on the agenda.
Seattle's pushing a yield at a better plan in the end, right?
I mean, we've been saying all along, we've been going, we've actually been getting into the kind of definitive phase thing, so it, it's not wasted effort.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
So you want to promote a motion?
Yeah.
Okay. I moved to-
7:10.
7:10, okay. I move to continue the open space preservation. Special permit hearing for Cranberry Heights until April 25th at 7:10 PM.
Second.
Go in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Someone's looking at this right. If that's Cranberry Meadow, that's Eagle Brook. There's no reason why anybody would be going through this thing unless they live there.
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
There's no benefit to getting out to Lawrence Street mother.
Get an occasional cop car. So, Don McKenzie here for-
Saying, the amount of traffic is gonna be-
I saw him up, well, I saw him up.
Local people.
Right.
Oh, is he here?
Yeah, I saw him in the hallway.
Come over there.
How you doing?
Good evening.
This is info. Do you mind if I sit up in front of you?
That's fine, yeah, that's fine.
Preferably over there so everybody else can, everybody can see.
This is 113 North Street, 113 Red. I'm Ken McKenzie.
You're gonna need a microphone.
You gotta, you need a microphone.
How you doing?
The green light on?
Green light on.
Little green light, you're good.
Yeah, I'm Ken McKenzie from Dunn McKenzie. I'm representing the Willards on the estate. There's Dana and Jay here, tonight.
Aye.
What we're looking for is input from the planning board. It's a tough lot to design. There's two existing houses on this one lot now. They've been there since 1937. There's enough frontage for two lots.
Hold on a second.
You just want camera time. The planning board has to see it.
Do you have a copy or do you have a copy?
We don't have a copy.
We don't have a copy.
We don't know, so we need to see it too.
Just tilt it a little bit, Mrs. Gleason, towards us so we can see it. Just tilt it a little bit so we can see it.
I'm looking now.
That's perfect, great. Does that work for you?
I'll do it just like him.
Okay.
Yep, I do, I have it.
Oh, you have it? That's-
I sent a PDF of it.
Well, then we can use the screen, if that's all right with you.
Yeah, let's go to the screen.
Yes.
Make this a little bigger. Chris, does the screen work?
It's very bright.
Screen works.
Team effort out there, huh?
Okay, on this, there's enough frontage for two lots, but when you start doing your circles and build factors, they don't fit in because the property lines are at an angle to the street. And you don't meet your, your 200-foot setback at the building setback lines on. So we tried to divide this up the best we could. We're trying to get three lots out of it. This here, we could put a proposed road in here. We can meet the build factors here, the circle. This being an estate lot, running back to the circle, we meet the build factor on that of 1882. And this here, you have your 200-foot frontage and you meet 200 feet across at the setback where it meets the sidelines. What we're looking for, this here, proposed road, is for one lot. The other two lots would be off of North Ave, and they'd have their own frontage. We're looking, see if the planning board would waive building a road for the one lot being back, because it's a big expense to put in a long road. Now, over on Cleveland Street, Ledgway, I know there's two lots there and they don't have a road in, and they have it as a private road, and it shows going back with two driveways.
Where's that?
Ledgway's off Cleveland Street. If it's between Fruit Street and it's down a little further.
Is it older?
It's older, yes.
Because I know that we don't, in the zoning, we don't allow for private driveways.
You, no.
Where's the driveway?
But do they waive building a regular roadway?
They, what we've done in the past, in the past 12 years, a few times actually, is just bring down the specs of the road. So it's, I, I think the criteria is that it's accessible and passable safety-wise for the vehicles, for the public safety. So I know on a couple of them, we've made the roads 18 feet and no street trees and minimal drainage, things like that, just so that it worked, but still was able to be accessed by the public safety vehicles.
Right, okay.
So scaling down the specs of a, of a, a regular road construction.
Yes, that would be nice. What I have down here, this is the low area right here. Everything from right in the center here drains down there. You could have the road, have it tilted at one way and go down into here, and this would be natural. You could leave that, this thing is like two feet deep from the stone wall, and it could be a natural detention basin where you wouldn't even have to take the trees out and let it design. You know, I just want to find out whether we'd have to go through all this in designing all of it and waiving it. Now, the 18 feet, would you do the 18 feet all the way up, or would you just, because it's for one house, you would waive, would, we have to put the cul-de-sac in as well? Or could we just come back 18 feet into it, then go one driveway back? Or if we're gonna do a driveway here?
Can you make that one stay long?
Go back 18? Looking for input from the planning board.
Why does it need to ruin it all? Why can't you just use a regular driveway?
First, can you point the driveway into Russell 3 to make it Russell 3?
It's long, but it-
Right here?
Yeah.
Oh, you could bring it right off the main road, or, or you could come in here and then onto it.
Center of the frontage, because he needs the road for frontage.
This would here, this would here be a basin. You don't have to use the whole thing, that's huge. You know, you can bring a driveway up the side of it.
How do you access that house today?
Pardon?
How do you-
Common driveway.
There's a common driveway.
One common driveway.
There's one common driveway here that comes right up to gets to the back house. What we'd like to do is, because this one here, it gets blocked all the time. You only park one car in here, then you have trouble getting by and if you park in front of the garage, people don't get out. So we'd like to take the real lot and bring a new driveway in for it.
So you want to have each of these existing houses on its own, separate?
Yes.
Conforming lot?
Yes.
All right, other than that, you just leave the driveway the way it is and put it in an estate lot, right?
Yeah.
All right, so...
Well, this is the estate lot.
Right, but you're making it so those two can both suffice on their own?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the reason we're doing all this?
Yes.
And not just using the same driveway?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Correct, yes.
Right, so basically, yeah, I don't know. To me, if, if you can prove, because we like the, the non-invasive, limited drainage anyway with regular subdivisions, if you could just show that the runoff was working, I don't see any need to put any drainage structures in as long as the water goes wherever and infiltrates, is that what it's gonna do? To base a low area there?
Yes, yeah, everything goes to there. All this drains this way, every, everything drains right down to there.
Can you provide that, Rich, just?
No, I think you can grade it so you have swales alongside the driveway, so it's...
Exactly, right.
I mean, essentially what you're doing is you're creating a, a larger driveway than you probably would ordinarily have, which will act as a roadway to service the house.
But, 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 but. Are you intending to make the estate lot a buildable lot down the road?
Buildable lot, yes.
And how would you access that? Separate driveway.
We could either access it with this driveway coming in off this and just come right into it. We plan on putting a house in here. We've done soils testing here, which is very good and it works.
You need your own frontage though on the street, right?
It has frontage, so you could either, you could have a drive...
It has frontage here.
The state lot does?
115 plus, you know, half the rounding. It only needs the 50.
So you could have the driveway off of North Street or if you want to have one driveway, while one road serves in two lots for one less curb cut, you could go that direction as well.
Yeah, yeah.
So it depends.
Yeah, you'd, by having a wider driveway here and letting the two axes off of it, you'd save more wooded area there.
Right.
It'd be less cutting.
Sure, sure.
Stay natural.
Sure. That makes sense.
Now that I understand that, there is one other option I had.
Uh-oh.
That's the last.
Betsy doesn't have this, I was looking at, this was something we did.
The Trojan Horse, I've seen this before.
I seem to miss the beginning.
I just, I just got this today.
It's one lot, two houses on one lot, right.
This here is, creates three standard lots with the one roadway coming in, making this a basin area, using the same area as well. This here has a build factor of 13.4. This has a build factor of 13.7. I didn't put the build factor in here because we didn't know where the testing was at the time and cut it off, but I could cut this off here. Then it's all this land back here, which could be used in a conservation restriction or could use, be used with the Mass Autobahn Society. Mass Autobahn owns here, around and back up here.
So by putting in that cul-de-sac, you'd get each of those lots the proper zoning and...
This lot here has that. You go over here, you get your round figure, you make your 200 a straight line across and this one as well. From here to here, you have your 200 and you would have three conventional lots.
What'd you do with the second house? You got rid of it?
No, the second house, the second house is, is probably gonna be torn down and rebuilt. I know they have to, they could be building it back here.
Oh, okay, so you're...
So the house is, the existing house would come down?
Well, they would probably rebuild it, that's what they're looking on.
Because with that, you wouldn't have the front setback, right?
You wouldn't have the front setback, right.
So that's gotta come down, but that's, that's a great looking plan.
Yeah, I like it better.
They are holding out.
It has to come down and that, you can't maybe come down.
Well, yes, they wouldn't be able to keep that there.
In a scenario where we were just ready to approve a driveway, why would we encourage the development of a road?
We weren't approving a driveway, we were approving a road that we're gonna minimize to...
Right, and so we'd have a road plus a driveway, this one we only have.
Two lots off of the driveway instead of one.
Right. Right, yeah.
You would have this one and this one.
Well, wouldn't you have, wouldn't you have three? Wouldn't you have lot number one off it as well?
One's on North, it meets everything right off of North Street.
So what, what width would we require this road to be, John? I would, the same thing as the driveway. And before, rather than having the cul-de-sacs, Ken, we've just used...
A T-turnaround?
Yeah, a hammerhead or something.
Can we design it as a hammerhead?
We've had them before and it's been approved, I think it was approved...
If I design a hammerhead here, that house might meet the setback.
You hit the hammerhead, right?
Yeah.
Rather than having the whole big cul-de-sac, right?
If I design a hammerhead here, this house might meet the setback.
Perfect.
I might be able to get that.
Is that, is that a public road or a private road?
It's gonna be public.
Well, doesn't need to be?
It's on private land.
So you would, and the what, the other examples, were they pri, public roads or did they remain private?
Will you intend to have this approved by the town and maintained by the town or keep it private?
If we could keep it private, we'd like to keep it private.
You want to keep it private.
It, it basically, it was a gift.
Microphone, microphone, microphone. Microphone, sir. It's not, it's not for us, it's for the people at home.
Sorry. My name is Dana Willard and this was given to us as a gift from my grandparents. So, it's, we've been trying to do this for the longest time. We really, as, as talked about first, we just want the driveway, you know, there and then, you know, to go that route. So we're, we're not developers or anything type of thing. We grew up in this town, moved away, we want to come back in and, and then the main house that's on the land, my mother lives in it, Jay's mother lives in it. So, I want to be close to her so we can, you know, she got another 15 or 20 years, we're close by to take, you know, that type of thing. So, we would like to make that work.
Why wouldn't you want it public and let the town maintain it rather than you guys maintaining it? Any reason?
I would say, well, would this then have to have full drainage and everything or is it as you talked about before?
No, what we're talking about is before, we have minimum specs for the road. It's gonna be like a driveway road, so it's a bigger perimeter. And that complies with the public safety access, but that means down the road, it could be acceptable by the town.
That's fine, why would the town want it?
The town would have to take it if it complies, approved by the planning board.
That's what I'm saying, why would we encourage this to be a public road?
Can we just stick, now? Can we just stick with like the first option we, that was presented?
That's fine too.
Well, that's a road too.
Second option.
What's that?
You put this option out there, so if you don't want to do it, that's fine.
You like the first option, that's fine.
Did you not like the second option?
No, this second, this second option is nice. And it leaves a lot, a lot of open space that they could either put a conservation restriction on or give it away to the Autobahn, whatever. With this other one up here, there's no extra land.
Right.
In order to get that build factor to work, you have to use up all the land on it.
I think it's gonna be a client's choice.
Yeah, I think so too.
Which way they want to go.
That's right, okay, and we could probably change this a little bit with hammerheads and work and see how it works.
Yeah.
Do you have any other questions or? And, and maybe I was speaking out of turn. I mean, you're representing us, I, all I want to do is...
Yeah, but you're paying them.
It's gonna ultimately be your decisions on what you want to do.
Yeah, yeah, no, definitely.
So, all I want to say is we would just try to minimize the cost of putting in a street. So I look in as, stick with the driveway if the first option was a little bit more, if that was acceptable, probably go with that, but we can talk to Ken about the second option some more, maybe see what the cost would be, et cetera. But, we're just kind of looking to keep it in the family.
This way here...
It'll be just three of us. The two of us grew up in Norfolk, went to Norfolk schools, King Philip, the elementary schools here. He's in Plainville, I'm in North Arbour, we're looking to move back and get near my mom and...
Ken, you can do some specs for them on the cost of the two different ones.
There's not gonna be much difference over cost.
Well, then a state law is gonna be setback how far? The state law could be setback, oh, the old plan, how far is that? Right, but how far will it be setback from the road? On that first plan, yeah, the house. On the first plan.
Right here, where it bulges out, it's 78, it gets to 80 feet here. That's enough so they can face a house towards this way.
Is that about 200 feet or 150 feet or?
Uh, this, this whole road to the, center of the cul-de-sac here is 380 feet.
Right.
So the house would be back to 300 maybe?
I mean, a 300-foot driveway costs a lot of money too. And if you're doing, if you're doing a roadway that's gonna just have a driveway appearance with no drainage, and this looks like you're gonna end up with more value because you're gonna have a, a more conventional setup, you know, it just may bring you more down the road. But, Ken could do the numbers and see which way works out financially better for you, but it probably, like, it'd probably be close.
Can they not put multiple houses on a single lot?
No.
Even if the lot's oversized?
You don't have to fight about who gets the estate lot.
Yeah, I, two houses on one lot.
It's all the same.
That would be a non-conforming lot in this, by today's...
These are 1937.
Right, what I'm saying, you couldn't put a, you couldn't put a third house on it without subdividing it.
Right.
All right, I think you guys got your direction, so you've got some options.
Yeah.
I have another question while I'm here. If we took a sliver of the land here, which we did before, and we could get two lots here, can, can we keep these, oh, no, we don't want to do, keep the two houses on one lot, do we?
No, that's why you're here.
No. Thank you very much, sorry about that, thank you. You've been a great help.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome, guys. Good luck, yep. See you again. I hope so, yeah?
Uh, no, it'll be a public hearing.
Sure, Rick. Or either way, it'd have to be a public hearing.
Either way.
The state law would be...
It'd be a special permit.
Special permit hearing.
And if you do the, the other option, be a subdivision.
Yes.
I don't think on, on that roadway, Ken, you're gonna have much more than just grading and paving.
Right.
You're gonna have no drainage, no street trees, no sidewalk and you don't have to have the same compaction detail underneath the road that you would a regular road, so you could really change the specs and make this not much more than a driveway.
I get an 800-foot driveway. I know what it's like. You could have bought it. Thanks a lot for your time.
All right, guys.
Thank you.
All set?
All set, yeah.
Endorse 1618 Sharon Ave site plan. Looks like it's private out here. Do we need to vote to endorse that?
Usually we do.
Or did we already vote to approve it?
Did we vote on it last week, or last month?
I thought we did.
Those, yeah, it was last month. I mean, it's up to you, you can vote to endorse it, why not? No harm.
Why don't we just vote to endorse it then?
Okay, I move to endorse the 1618 Sharon Ave site plan.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we can sign that at the end, Betsy? Review and endorse Norway Farms Open Space Subdivision Plan?
Same thing, right?
We've already voted that approval.
So I move to endorse the Norway Farms Open Space Subdivision Plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Recuse.
Four ayes and one recuse. So now we want an, okay, on 5 Phillips Way and those folks doing...
What about 14 Sharon?
No, the 5 Phillips Way is the, our...
Taylor Rental.
Taylor Rental, who just wants to extend their special permit or their site plan or both?
Just the site plan, there was no special permit.
Just the site plan, so what are they allowed to extend it, for one year or two, one year?
Yep, one year.
And what is, what is the date we should be extending it to?
March 31st, 2019.
Right there, right there.
If somebody could make a motion to extend that site plan?
Michelle can do that one.
Motion.
Move to extend the site plan decision number 2015-07 to March 31st, 2019.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we have a, a minor change in the retaining wall for the Public Safety Building, the police station. And the facilities guy came to us, it's a minor change, but I told him just to be safe, he might want to just show the planning board. It's, uh, it's going from a split face to a ready rock, is that it?
There was a versalock wall that was originally approved. By the board.
Yeah.
And... Is going on a ready rock, ready, ready rock wall. Which you should be familiar with, because it's right next to where? Oh, we actually, I think we're in the, this is actually next door.
Just show us a picture of it, that's all.
Yeah, it's next door.
There you go.
And how high is the wall? This isn't the front of the police station? Yeah.
Well, it's completely awesome. I don't know what the problem is. Says right there.
Yeah, so it's...
It's true.
Ready rock walls here and then off to the side.
Okay.
And the wall is between... How much is exposed?
I thought they had to be four feet, right? They're gonna grade up to it just to keep it four feet?
It's facing, facing the road, right?
Right.
Yeah, okay, right, yeah.
Facilities Director Matt would like to go with the limestone color, uh, showing the brochure, but I mean, if there was a...
Do we get any DRB input? Well, Mr. DRB, what do you think?
If there was a preference for a different, uh...
I think I've lost the battle over ready rock. It's ubiquitous.
Right, yeah. Uh, I have no problem with it.
What's the reason for the change?
Cost probably, huh?
It's actually, it's, it's more costly to purchase, but it's, uh...
Less costly to install?
Less costly to install because it's, uh, the larger block. It's actually an engineered wall that actually provides better structural support than the versalock wall that was there.
Gotcha.
And actually, uh...
She feels like you're driving along a freeway in New Jersey.
Do this work with a contractor to put it in to help with the overall project.
Gotcha. Toward, we need to write it out of our...
It says, it actually says it's completely awesome.
Completely awesome.
And it says that engineers and architects around the world...
I'm gonna go on record again this week, like last week. Aaron does not like anything about ready rock.
Everybody's using it now, huh? Amazing.
They say ready rock because there's such a wide range of it, so people see the nicer stuff and they're like, oh, that's not bad, and then what they do is they put in the generic line.
So why don't we, uh...
Then you look like you're a highway project.
Do we need a vote on this?
That was more for your own edification, but...
I think that's, that's fine.
Well, it says here, it says vote to approve field change.
Well, I keep it open for you. Do you like a vote?
If you want to vote, you can make the motion.
A vote would probably be better, I would think.
I don't want to vote, I'm principled. You have to vote to use this stuff.
You want to vote to change that is...
Is DRB?
Yeah, well, DRB just advises us, right? And then the vote comes out to us, so that's why I said, what do you think, Mr. DRB?
You can advise yourself, but then you make a decision, it's two steps. But it is completely awesome.
They pick a version of it or do they just say ready rock? Sorry, I heard ready rock, I tuned out.
What do you want to do now?
I don't have voting, I don't have a vote anyway, so...
Aaron's gonna make the motion.
You can advise us on your opinion from a DRB perspective.
Advises us to rewrite our ready rock regulations.
We don't actually have any.
No, we don't.
I know, but that's the thing, this is, this is what we're gonna get. And this is what everybody sees.
And the regulations is fieldstone.
I'd just say, thank God, it's in an industrial area.
It's an industrial park.
That's the center of town.
It's the only saving grace.
Pretty good in that, that part is there though.
Oh, yeah, it looked great.
I'm so sure I agree with you here.
It's real great behind Town Hall too.
All right, Rich, what, what is the current, what was the original design? What product was it again?
The original was a versalock wall.
Versalock?
Yeah, not too pretty though.
Yeah, and it's not much different.
Yeah.
All right, I'll, I'll offer a motion to approve the change for the wall at 5 Phillips Way, 15 Shire Industrial Park Site Plan. But it's, I'm sorry, but gosh, I'm in the wrong one, excuse me. I move to approve the change in the wall at 14 Sharon Ave for the Public Safety Building from the versalock design to the...
Ready rock.
Ready rock design.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
He says with enthusiasm.
Completely awesome.
I was proposing that you make the motion, I don't know why then I had to make the motion.
Are we all set for our minutes?
I do believe so. We had two changes that were both made, Betsy, correct?[1712.35]
Motion?
I move to accept the minutes for the meeting on February twenty first, twenty eighteen.
Our second? All in favor?
Aye.
Zoning amendments. These are the ones that you're bringing forward to, uh-
Yes.
Our public hearing on our next meeting, correct?
Uh, yes.
Alright.
The, uh-
You wanna just give us a-
This is D Y.
Just give us a, uh-
Some design standards?
I can give you a brief synopsis. The first one, you already heard at the February meeting, which was amendment to the Affordable Housing Bylaw.
Right.
Which was to prescribe when somebody has to file for the special permit. Right now, we don't have anything in relation to when you're doing development. The other one was to add the, uh, option to do payment and lieu, as opposed to units themselves. It is at the choice of the board, not the applicant. And there could be a combination of options if the board so chose to do with a development project. The other one was clarification of the schedule for which affordable units will be provided.
It's a pretty intense table. A lot of reading there.
It is. And the thing is, so I did a little canvassing of other bylaws of this type, and they're pretty much all and off the smart growth model that was there. And if you read through the smart growth model, it really was based on a hundred unit subdivision. And generally speaking, we're not gonna see a hundred unit subdivisions, and so I wanted to kind of- in our, in our recent work with Norway Farms, this is kinda scaled to fit all the way through. So from the smallest project all the way up.
Which defines it, which is good for the folks that, that will all get to understand.
Yeah, so it should be a little bit clearer to people what they have to do. The, uh, the other bylaw is, is exercise aerobic studio, which-
What number, there's no numbers here, huh?
On the warrant-
Page, I thought that was the page.
Page?
Yeah, page ten, I think article twenty-two.
Yep, alright, okay.
So essentially allows for, uh, different types of exercise form, and then the primary purpose would be allow for accessory usage, which would include meditation, nutrition, massage therapy, and the sacred tree yoga studio that we have in town now.
The sacred tree?
Yeah, sacred tree.
The village at River's Edge?
Why, why are we amending zoning instead of just allowing a noncompliant use?
So the way our bylaw is structured, we don't allow, you have to either conform, you know, you have to-
It's gotta be listed.
It's gotta be listed. If it's not listed, it's deemed prohibited, and we don't allow use perimeters, so you're, you know, some towns do that, but not that many towns, actually. So therefore, you either, it fits within the bylaw that we have uses for, or you have to make amendments to it. And that's really the pathway, and then whether you wanna have something allowed by right or by special permit, so.
There's nothing in the allowable uses that can stretch to, has stretch, get it, to this sort of-
It was pretty good.
No, there wasn't. I was looking to stretch.
Grab myself up.
Well, actually, this, so exercise, exercise aerobic studio is in the use table, but it's not defined, so. That was the trick to define it.
Oh, it's in there, but not defined?
Yeah, so it's a defined it.
And of course mediation and nutrition probably could come under a medical class.
They could, but some of these studios do a little bit with nutrition and meditation, and certainly massage, so it's a-
Mediation or meditation?
Meditation.
So you gotta type it on.
Yeah, spelling, uh-oh.
Oh, good thing.
Good catch, thank you.
Yep.
It's very different experience there.
Yeah, you're right.
One will hurt and one will help.
Good catch.
Well, it depends.
And this, and article twenty-three is just a follow-up from the Fall Town Meeting, which is to ban recreational marijuana establishments in town. At the time-
Where is the, where is the, uh, issue with the state legislature, um, stand on, uh, there was a proposal made a couple of months back that any town that prohibited, as we have done in many other towns, would not share in the tax revenue from, from, uh, for the marijuana. Have, have you heard anything about that?
No, I can't say I have to know where that stands, and I certainly could find out.
Yeah.
For, although I will say, we already banned it, so.
I understand, but I mean, there is, there might be, I don't know if there is, but there might be tax implications, tax revenue implications.
None of that has been finalized yet, that's still a lot of events on the hearing.
I think one of our, one of our residents is lead counsel for the state in this marijuana department.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, we could, uh-
We could ask that individual.
Yeah, we certainly could.
Take Doyle, yeah. So is that it, Rich, those three?
Uh, and then,
Peroration?
Although the la- twenty-four,
Yep.
Oh, it says me on here, technical, not me, but the planner position, but actually, this is, this came by way of a petition, technically, so article twenty-four. And there's a company called Carvana. And if you still wanna Google it.
Small Comex?
Uh, it's interesting. We'll, we'll, we have the internet here, so we can show you quickly if you like.
Yeah.
Wonders of modern technology.
You know, to get a flavor of, uh, so the company called, called Carvana is around, it's around the country, have different locations, and they wanna establish, uh, in the northeast and particularly the Massachusetts. And they sell cars. But the concept is essentially like a vending machine to buy cars.
Oh, my God.
Okay, now I just wanna, just to, for informational purposes, they're not trying to, what you see in that rendering is not what they're looking to do here in town, but-
I would have fun with that.
Yeah. But the concept is, you know, you go on and it's door to door. You could sell cars, you can buy cars, and they come to your house, so they wanna operate here in town.
But they're gonna store the vehicles, the ones they have inside, is that correct?
Yeah, they're not for public display, so they basically, they're-
They're inside.
They're inside.
And where are they, what, proposing to set up in town?
On Route one A.
Mitch's, where Mitch's is across from Eagle Brook, yeah?
So you'd have to buy it all sight unseen, like vehicle unseen?
No, they bring it to you.
Well, yeah, I mean, you-
After you buy it, or are they-
Yeah, but apparently, I mean, I haven't done this, but I guess-
Seven day test to own.
You, you got, well, they give you, I think, I think it said thirty days, if I recall, or something like that.
Could do a lot.
Try it out with, but, uh, well, essentially, yeah, it's like a, you know, it's, yeah, similar to CarMax, but it's all done, you don't go to a lot.
So they're gonna build a big structure there?
They're gonna make renovations to the existing building to be able to accommodate it there, yeah.
Is it offices, or is it just like a warehouse?
It's a little bit of offices, and also the cars are there, they're, they're brought there, they're, there's a little bit prepping, but they're not-
New cars or used cars?
They're new.
New cars.
They're new?
And they're, I mean, they're, they're new and, you know, leased car, I mean, you can look, but you wanna, just put in a car, what are you looking for?
From Eagle Brook.
Uh, just for-
Put, put, uh, I don't know, put, put a brand, put BMW, and they put a brand and see what that could be.
There you go. This is a little bit better, actually shows you what-
It's been doing some dreaming down there.
So there's actually
Training involved.
A physical vending kind of automation to it.
Seventeen years.
It's just to show us, it's actually what it does.
Seventeen years, yeah.
Kennedy's used to keep this.
This is really more of a marketing thing, it does, it's not, that's what I wanna tell you, it's not, there's not a vending machine with cars that, you know-
That's too bad, that would be fun.
There's no neon tower, that would be-
You push the button and the car-
It's not as, uh-
And then the fifty cents comes out for your change, or?
It's not as glitzy as it looks on this marketing piece, but,
Wow, okay.
But nevertheless, they, they wouldn't, under our current bylaw, they wouldn't be able to, uh, to be able to operate there.
They must be a listed, uh, manufacturer's rep if they're selling new cars from different, different companies, right?
Yeah. I wonder what they say is new.
So does the town get a portion of the tax for the sale, like they do in Norwood on auto mile? 'Cause that would be great.
Yeah.
That's the kind of revenue we could, our commercial business, we could use it there.
I don't know.
Yeah, but I don't understand, I mean, we, there must be a reason why we don't prohibit the sale of cars in town.
We do.
We do.
I mean, we do prohibit the sale of cars.
Because we don't want, we don't want-
Because we don't want auto mile in Norwood.
We don't want the, the outside cars all stored in, uh, public.
But you could, there's nothing here that says the cars have to be inside.
Yeah.
They're not, they're not for display.
They, they could be outside, they could be stored outside.
They could be stored outside, you know, but they're not visible from public view.
It's not display vehicles.
Where's that, where's that prohibited?
Right here says, does not display vehicles for sale on the premises. The last sentence.
In the bylaw, in the definition section.
So what if they say they're not for sale, they're just being stored, then when they bring them inside, they're for sale?
Say that again?
What if they're, what if they're set outside, they have a hundred cars outside that aren't for sale? They're sitting there being stored, and when the hundred cars inside gets sold, they bring the hundred cars outside inside.
We have an interloper.
Uh, there is gonna be, I mean, the other pieces, they're gonna have to have a, get a class two license, so I think within the licensing, they'll be, I'm trying to remember.
Why don't we just, why don't we just add a little bit of language, talk about no outside storage, sales of, display of any vehicles?
It looks like it was there before, but crossed out, is there a reason for that?
Yeah, storage was taken out, I'm just curious.
Yeah, so store and maintain were, uh, were stricken.
Maybe they store in.
Because they're stored, so again, if they're on the premises, they're being stored.
Yeah, so maybe it doesn't say no outdoor storage, or, no car shall be visible outdoors, or, you know, outside or something.
Is there a requirement for a, for a fence that-
Yeah, what if there was a fence and we couldn't see it?
Prevents the public from seeing the storage cars?
Seems like a, I, I know, we're, we're amending zoning, I mean, that's, this seems a little flip, at all. I don't mean that in a, I don't know, it's not a criticism, I'm just saying.
I'd be happy to criticize this lady.
Just an office building, so it can have a class two license.
We wanna make sure that none of the vehicles in, in any, uh, status are outside the building.
No, that's not what we're saying. If they're outside, and not for sale, you still want them visible to the public, right?
Yeah, you just don't want them visible, public view.
So they're able to be outside behind a fence?
Yeah.
Yeah.
An opaque fence.
And landscaping.
But you're not limiting the-
Fence and landscape.
You're not limiting the number.
Well, the second piece of it, though, um, I think you could say, you know, not, not for public, not from pub, not seen from public view, something along those lines, and then the landscaping piece will be if they, they gotta make modifications to the site, then that's when you would be involved with the site design.
I think Aaron's point was that the visibility issue isn't here in the language.
Yeah.
But we're, we're, we're also considering this because it's on one A, but are there, does this zoning area exist somewhere else in town where someone could put a car sales establishment that's not on one A, and it would be less acceptable?
This is the only place you-
I think right near Swetland Farm there is probably a good place for it.
We have a small place down on one fifteen by Cliff Cycle, but they're allowed like seven or eight cars outside, right?
On one fifteen, where it used to be Cliff Cycle, uh, after Cleveland Street.
Yeah.
They, it is kind of residential, and the, have to go before the selectmen each year for a license to operate, and that covers the maximum cars they can have out there. And Mitch's has started selling cars, they had cars out there that you could just walk up to, and they also have the limit by the selectmen as to how many cars they cannot have out there. What they have said about this place is, you know, a lot that normally sells cars has flags and balloons on the cars to say, I'm for sale, and that's what the selectmen have indicated they don't want. So-
So this loves storage behind a fence then, right?
Yeah, I mean, we can, I can advise them to add some language and-
Not visible from the street?
Not visible, too, 'cause the intent is that it's not visible, it's behind-
Yeah, it's not their model, right? Their model isn't to have cars outside for people to browse through. No, because they, they're this specific company.
Right, right.
You gotta be careful.
We can't, we can't change the zoning bylaws for a specific company, because another company could see that we've changed the zoning bylaws and come to do something different.
That's what I'm saying, this could be down the street with another company, if this language isn't fine too, and you can get something else that's not exactly what we're looking for.
You could change the bylaw, and if it works for this company, then they can do that. If some other company wants to do a similar thing within the framework of the bylaw, they can do that, too.
So we wanna make this language pretty covered.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just, I'm, I'm looking at these two things, like the word massage, you're gonna hear about that at the town meeting. Right, there's gonna be people thinking different things about the word massage. Right, and there's gonna be people objecting to car dealerships in town with this. So, just, I could see it coming already, right? So if there's things we can do to, if there's things we can do to meet the goals we're trying to achieve-
Right.
Without, and-
No, I think, uh, point taken understood that to add in the language that the car, that, um-
You can make it as restrictive as possible, right?
Yeah, not display from public view.
Because that's a big lot.
Yeah, yeah, no question. So what we can do is-
Are they gonna have a, they're gonna just redo the structure that's there?
They haven't gone into specifics yet of what, uh-
Thinking down the road for tax, we're changing the zoning tax revenue, are they gonna put something in there that's going to value?
Yeah, what I suggested to them, at least, I mean, this was tonight, to just go over the warrant articles, is that they would come in and make a presentation to the board, obviously, um, you know, why they're-
Next month?
Support, yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, so they'll, they'll be here for the hearing on the bylaw, but, um, we do have an opportunity that I could reach out to them before the hearing, before it gets advertised, to address this, um, point that the board's making, so we don't have to do amendments at the hearing process.
Does the limited use mean we, we have to vote on how many cars they sell each year? Is that-
No, the board of selectmen do.
The board of selectmen do.
Yeah, under the class two license.
We, I meant, we, that was the royal we.
Oh, okay. The collective we? The present rate is twenty-five, that's on the site.
The same district, so we can actually buy a car and get a massage at the same place?
No, it's a different district.
But you can't buy another one.
Yeah, it's a different district.
So we know your fun stuff's there.
C four up the street.
Now, remember, yeah, there was nothing to belabor the old massage, but that's accessory, though, it's not the principle there, so.
We're gonna hear it.
I'm sure you will, I'm sure, I'm sure people will make, uh-
How many minutes of town meeting, do they have on the, the kennels? An hour and a half?
In particular, that's why the bylaw was written so that it was accessory, so we wouldn't be dealing with a massage power that anybody wants to
Right.
Work with the nosocom lines, so.
And that's it for the zoning, right?
That's it for the, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, so we're on the agenda for public, uh, hearing next meeting, right?
Correct, yep.
Good, okay. Lastly, we have, uh, Anna comments on the townwide economic development strategy prepared by M A T C. That's the thing that's on up, it's on website.
Yeah. I mean, I think the only, I shouldn't say only, the consistent comment that I heard from the public was the, you know, the parking of the MBTA community rail lot, the utilization is a lot higher than what was in the draft report. So what I think, um, will do is, um, see if, I don't know if they have any other updates, but we could actually do some spot checking and just update that, um, in there.
How much parking is available?
Yeah, how much parking is available. I will say this, though, even though that was in the report as a recommendation, I think clearly if anything were to happen, we won't, we don't wanna diminish the amount of available parking at the community rail lot, so. So that, I just, I, I responded to a couple residents that had questions about that, so clearly that all would have to be taken into account, and if it doesn't work, it doesn't work, so that's just a concept that was in that report.
Who owns those lots?
They're the MBTA.
The MBTA, so we wouldn't even be able to do anything in that area, would we?
Will you look at, I was talking to Rich, would you look at the B one economic plan? I would say five out of the six things that are on there, we've tried years ago. Uh, we took, well, we're gonna build a bridge going over that land into, uh, the center of town where the Stop and Shop's gonna be. We tried to get an easement that MBTA had going through the woods, cause we're gonna build a road there, so we put the easement on the road so you can get to your parking on town. Took us over five years. We tried to get a couple of parking spots from them to try to coordinate this bridge that was going over the train station, uh, the, uh, the tracks. We were years without, you don't even get an answer. On Boyd's Farm, uh, on Kelly's property, the new Ford EV, I forget what it's called, right? They tried for over a year just to get a small fence put up for safety, so when people are walking over to the door, I mean, you don't get response for these people. And the more bedrooms, I told Rich, the more bedrooms in the B one district, I actually sponsored something to make it eight two-bedroom ones years ago. It used to be just two two-bedroom ones, but right now, we brought forward a town meeting four years ago to add another three units of four per building, and we were shut down by a large majority, they didn't, they weren't happy with the eight. But the fact of the matter is, when you look at the downtown, a couple of applicants have, have mentioned this also, you're allowed a fifteen thousand foot footprint on a thirty thousand square foot lot. You can't build near a fifteen thousand foot building, because with the access you need and the parking you need and the, the driveways, it doesn't work. And where this town here requires a gallonage for a septic system with a, a disposal, one and a half times the state rate, one and a half times. So if you need forty thousand gallons for a unit, for example, you'd need sixty in this town. So that pretty much eliminates even the possibility of getting eight two-bedroom bedrooms on a thirty thousand foot lot. My guess is you may be able to get, based on the footprint of the building, maybe five or so. So economically, it, it doesn't even come close to working. And there was a couple of other things in that report, all the stuff that we've tried for years and just got shot down. So I think that maybe a little history could have been brought into that, because a lot of these things that were done or brought forward just, basically, anybody, you just can't work with the MBTA. You can't even make a contact.
I will say, Rich, I mean, I went and checked out the commuter lots, I go to Boston twice a week, and they were extremely full before snow. You add snow in, people are going back home and working from home for the day, cause there just isn't enough to accommodate for what we have in town.
Right, and the lot behind my subdivision is less used because it's more expensive. And I think they doubled the parking rate on that about seven or eight years ago, they doubled the price. So there are many days when that's not even half full, so it's kind of sporadic, I don't know why, if I have a reason.
The property is the only thing the MBTA has left as an asset.
Right.
They're not gonna give any of it up.
Right, they have somebody manage that for them, but, but we tried to get a couple of spots, we needed to turn a corner or something, we were swapping land, I mean, years and years we tried and, and nothing, so...
Well, that, that lot that's next to your development is the one they're, they're talking about, but it's, it's utilization is cost, because of the pricing that's going on there at the parking lot, so... When it comes to these MBTA parking lots and potential development, you really gotta be careful and gotta get a good sense of the whole surrounding area, because they do, they, they push, you know, people don't want to pay for the parking, so they end up in adjacent areas and it could be on private, you know what I mean, on private lots, so... You really have to be very mindful and really look in if that's even feasible or not, because you don't wanna, you know, try to do one thing, create a, a much worse condition, so...
Have you seen a situation where a town or municipality would work with the MBTA to offer residents of said town a discounted rate to park in an area?
I don't know about the MBTA doing that, but I know some towns do that.
With their own parking that they own?
With their own parking.
Not with MBTA owned property?
Although I will say, there's, I'm sure there's probably something out there, though, I, I would think so.
But I believe on the big one, that's, uh, on my side, I believe that that is controlled by an outside company.
Yeah, they have a vendor that...
Has control of the use, the maintenance and the charging, so that's out of the MBTA.
I do understand that, I believe it's the town of Acton, actually, the parking lot for the MBTA's were turned over to the town and they manage them, and they collect the fee, and I don't know if they may have a residential rate.
Look what's happened in Walpole right now, I mean, they, the two private lots over there are both being developed right now, right next to a huge private development that they tore down, seven buildings, a bigger lot, so...
Or half of their parking lot, yeah.
Yeah, Walpole's down to one and a half lots now.
Wow, interesting.
What's that land that they're developing on, is it privately owned?
I, I believe those lots were privately owned, yeah, they weren't MBTA lots.
Yeah, I was, I was involved when I was previously coming here, the MBTA was looking to, uh, develop the Dedham Corporate Rail Station, and, you know, they wanted to have reserved two hundred seventy-five spaces, but what was happening there is people were, there's a medical center, people were trying to park over there. People were parking at the hotel adjacent to it, so all these commuters who should be on the commuter rail lot were on private property, and then the private property owners were then having the police commuters so that were taking up their private property, um, parking spaces. So that's why you really gotta be careful about with that whole parking thing, because, uh, like I said, it could create an adjacent issue, or it could be a situation where...
Need more smart people.
If the parking is very good, that's awesome, um, so anyway...
Uh, speaking of B one, any, any other information about, uh, any other development that might possibly happen here? Any other lots, people expressing interest in developing their lots or anything that you've heard about lately?
Well, this one's gonna be starting soon.
Union, right?
That's excellent, yeah, yeah, I was thinking up here.
That'll be a nice piece for that...
Oh, boy, we'll, we'll...
Should, should we close the meeting, or are we...
Yeah.
No, not yet.
We just need to continue, uh, Fernridge.
Didn't we, didn't we continue Fernridge?
Do you continue?
No. So we have a motion to continue the, uh, special permit modification for Fernridge.
I move to continue the open space, uh, open space, special permit modification and request for bond reduction for Fernridge Estates to Airboat Twenty-Fifth at seven twenty PM.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And just to close the loop on this last bullet for the development strategy, what are the next steps there? We have a finalized report that we're...
Yeah, so the next steps will, will forward the comments, I know, Walter, you have made some comments, um, to me previously, I think you did as well. If you have any other comments from the board, I could, you know, jot them down, I mean, I have comments now from you. Um, I'll forward them to MAPC and then they can incorporate them in to the, the draft for a final draft, and then come back to the board to do an overall presentation, cause they wanted to hold off till we got comments in, so we could set something up.
You know, the same line with the MBTA and, and the contact, we have tried for on and off the selectmen, probably thirteen years, the contacts stop and shop. Yep. They don't get back to you, I mean, we still haven't finished the roadway they're responsible for, but they did finally make a, a partial payment, but they're almost impossible to talk to, and we had a broker show up that, I think they're looking for a lease price, and that's so outrageous, no one would ever lease it. And the broker from, uh, their real estate company showed up months ago and they asked about the, uh, potential of putting in a solar field on the whole five acres. Now, thank God that in our zoning, a solar field can only be an accessory use and not a main use, but, uh, all the contacts we've tried to make with them, because right now, uh, the Stop and Shop, and that's owned by, uh...
Eastern Development.
Eastern Development and Stop and Shop has the lease, that thing, our Eastern's getting this money and they have no intention to really do anything, so... As far as the anchor place there, it's, you can't even get a communication.
Have you been involved in any of that outreach or...
Yeah, so we did, we did the, um, Colliers, I think it is? I think it's, no, I'm trying to think of the real estate firm, who's doing, who was the firm for Southwood Hospital?
It's the same company, yeah.
Is it Colliers, I think?
I think it is, yeah.
Okay, they did reach out, that, so for the, for the, they were, they were more talking about Southwood Hospital, there was, you know, with, with Archdiocese was putting out requests for proposals, but they also represent, uh, Stop and Shop, and Stop and Shop is, at this point, interested and potentially looking at other options to get out of their lease, during the long-term lease there, it goes, the, the, the lease goes to twenty twenty-eight right now, um, with further extensions. So they would like to, they don't, the idea of putting a, a Stop and Shop, a full store is not...
Off the table, yeah.
You know, it's off the table, so they would, however, they would entertain, um, working with the town on other development options. The trick part is that they have this long-term lease, it's hard to find somebody who would do a development project on leased land. You know, oftentimes they want to have the ownership interest.
Put a little bit of market going.
Right, um, but the lease is, it's five hundred thousand dollars a year, so it's a pretty expensive lease.
You know, the two, the two, the three parcels on Main Street that are owned by Ron Cahaly, I mean, with Stop and Shop, so, cause they were for sale a while ago, and Stop and Shop sold that then, people don't realize, there are lease restrictions on anybody buying a building on those lots. And basically, you cannot sell any product that Stop and Shop does or Walgreens, so if you want a cheese and wine store, it's not allowed, it's in the deed, there's deeded restrictions.
How did sellers get there? Because it seems to violate that require, that restriction, excuse me.
Right, the coffee shop, right, I'm not sure, they don't sell anything that's pre-made, maybe that was it, but these are all deed restrictions on every lot that Stop and Shop has.
That I know, that I know.
And that's why the, the guy, if he wanted to sell them, I mean, restaurants, things like that work, but a lot of these people that have come, they, they don't...
And they say they're, they say they're interested in other developments and they say they're interested in getting, not a lease, but they're not, they're really not. They're just dragging their feet, they're just, it's just talk, we met with them, we met with them several times and they said the same, oh, we didn't know you were interested in developing that, you are? Oh, we'll look into it, oh, we'll consider, if, they're just playing with you.
You'll understand the dynamics, if you start to make contacts, and I forget the man's name, we all used to have it Stewart, Vice President of Real Estate at Stop and Shop, because they really have the controlling strings, you'll find after a year or two, it's the most frustrating experience you've ever had.
They're, they're now owned by a, a company from Europe called Ahold, and they're involved as well, so, it's just three parties that, uh, that are involved.
Well, I think, you know, overall, can't, can't stop asking, and we still need to work to...
We're gonna keep asking.
Work it, so, I mean, I don't...
It's like pushing on a rope.
Yeah, I mean, I do know that that lease, though, is, is somewhat of an impediment, because they, they being Stop and Shop, they're on the hook with Eastern Development, and Stop and Shop would be interested to get out of it, of course, everything costs money and what that, those terms are, so...
Not a high priority for them.
Yeah.
We had talks with them, the one time the man showed up, we talked about, Stop and Shop is developing now like, uh, Roach Brothers, a ten thousand foot neighborhood supermarket, like the Brothers chain, Stop and Shop has right now perhaps...
Thank you.
Two or three of those, uh, templates going in other towns, other areas, and the last we heard, cause we were thinking of putting, well, forget about the fifty thousand foot building, put in a ten thousand foot neighborhood market and expand and put other retail in there and put residential above and develop the whole corner and you could be the anchor. And, uh, they were waiting to see whether the other stores were profitable or whatever, and...
I heard that story.
Never, yeah, and they, and they never came back, and I think, uh, I sold the home to the, the CEO of Roach Brothers years ago, and I think the Brothers stores do tremendously well and they're expanding all over the place, so, uh, that concept, it worked with expanded...
Be perfect for our town.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, no, there might be another small grocer that we...
We've had three or four groceries that have come over the past ten years that wanted that spot, way back, Hannaford's wanted that spot. And, uh, Stop and Shop wouldn't sell it to anybody that's competitive, so...
Well...
Right there in the deed restriction, it's black and white.
What about the town?
Hmm?
What about the town buying the land?
They don't want to sell it, they want to lease it.
Well, they would, they actually would, I mean, the town, they would sell it to the town, but the problem is the value of that, you have, when you, because of the lease terms, if you bring it to net present value, it's, it's a significant...
Millions of...
Millions of, millions of dollars, so...
For a landlocked piece of land.
So it's not... Not sure would make sense financially.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
There was a case in Connecticut years ago that we were going after and trying to get people to move on it, but it's, it's a risk when you fight a public company, but Connecticut brought Stop and Shop to court for land banking, and we actually considered the area like this a blighted area, because you're landbaking this land, you have no intention of building, you're disturbing the whole downtown area. So that, uh, was a, a legal case that went on in, I don't know what part of Connecticut, and they actually prevailed. So Stop and Shop had to go sell that at, uh, a market price and moved on, but, you know, you get legal and you put aside money to try to find, fight a, uh, public company, it's not easy. And we even talked about a marketing, uh, campaign to shun them in the public eye, like ruining our center of town because of causing a blight in this, because they have Stop and Shops all around now, but, uh, it never went anywhere.
Well, I think that, in part, they probably would sell it, it's just that the net present value of that lease is a significant amount of money, which is kind of hard to find the buyer, that's part of the problem, but, again...
Unless they want to eat that.
Means they really don't want to sell it, I mean, they keep saying something, but then their actions are different, it's just right.
And if they did sell it, they'd still probably want to put a restriction on the, on the deed.
Right, I know they say all these things, but then their actions aren't genuine to anything they say.
Right.
It's just very frustrating, because that's the anchor spot at the town. Are there comments on the development strategy? Motion to, uh, you all, so, what, you need Rich from us?
Yes.
All right, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.